For November 5th, 2018, and we'll call upon Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you. If you would join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had to smile a little bit. Last week, both Mr. Jones and Mr. Marriott were out, and so poor Dot Miller was standing all by herself on this side of the room for the pledge. Roll call, Kristen.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Very good. All present accounted for. Nancy Ford asked me why we don't have any minutes to approve tonight.
The business meeting was last week. You have to run a back track for the week, last week.
So we'll have them next week.
Next week.
Very good. Thank you. I knew there had to be an explanation, and I know you would have it, Kristen. Public comment on items not scheduled on our agenda. I have Stephanie Wells signed up. Stephanie?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Wells. I live at 12458 West 70th Place in Arvada. I'm here to talk about recycling. I've become aware that Arvada has a very abysmal recycling rate compared to even other cities nearby in Colorado. Lubland is doing really well with like 61 percent. Boulder, 54 percent. Louisville, 48 percent. Arvada, 13 percent. And this is really pitiful in my mind. We really need to do better. There aren't any recycling bins that the public can use if they don't use it with their trash service. All the trash services charge for this. Some of them don't even offer it. There aren't any recycling bins at the festivals that the city puts on. And there's no requirement for the trash haulers to even offer recycling. So I'm just in, I did a survey of the five big trash haulers in Arvada. The average increase rate they charge for recycling is $7 a month. A lot of my neighbors don't want to pay $7 more a month because it doesn't matter to them. They don't see the importance of it. If the city would require trash haulers to offer recycling for free or included, that would help a lot. Having a contract trash hauler would help even more. It would lower the rates and require recycling to be included. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this public comment portion and open it up for some new business. We have two items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution accepting a pedestrian, traffic signal, utility, guard rail, storm sewer, and streetlight easements from Cimarron Development Company and Dillon Companies along West 91st Place and Candellas Parkway, and a general warranty deed from Cimarron Development Company generally located at the intersection of West 91st Place and Indiana Street and West 91st Place and Candellas Parkway. The second item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Hewitt Zawars Inc. for professional services related to the design of Tennyson Street Complete and Connected Corridor Project in an amount not to exceed approximately $338,000 in the first year. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent items R-18-115 and R-18-116 be approved. Be approved.
Thank you. Motion for approval of the consent agenda. All votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 18-044, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the City of Arvada deferred compensation, and Council Bill 18-045, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a light industrial use warehouse and distribution for factory motor parts, 6510 Wadsworth Boulevard Suite 100, and Council Bill 18-046, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a live-work use in the P1 Professional Office District for Lantern Home Group Live-Work, 7901 Ralston Road, and Council Bill 18-047, an ordinance amending Section 98-68 Reports by Vendor, Payment of Tax of Article III Sales Use Tax of Chapter 98 Taxation of the Arvada City Code pertaining to vendor fees, and lastly, Council Bill 18-048, an ordinance amending Section 98-70 exempt sales and Section 98-78 exemptions of Article III Sales and Use Tax of Chapter 98 taxation of the Arvada City Code pertaining to agreements to effectuate exemptions all be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for November 19th, 2018 at 6:30 PM.
Motion for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Well, like last week, we have the same situation where it's now 6:12. We cannot begin our public hearings until 6:30. I'll open it up for city council reports. And if we don't have any city council reports, we're going to be sitting here just looking at each other for a while. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one, and that's, this obviously is the end of a very busy election season. I just want to encourage everybody in Arvada. If you have not yet voted, it is not too late. Find your ballot, fill it out, and drop it off. It's too late to mail that ballot. But polls close at 7:00 tomorrow, so make sure you do your duty and vote. You know, our community is all better if we hear from everybody, and the ballot box is one of those places we do that. And so please, if you have not yet voted, find your ballot and vote.
Good observation. Other reports? Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, next Tuesday we'll have the, I'm sorry, Monday we'll have the Land Development Code update, Module 2. That's the only item that's on the workshop agenda next Monday. It should be a very busy meeting with the, I believe--
Will the Planning Commission be there?
The Planning Commission will be there, and of course, you have both Councilmember Bob Pfeifer and Councilmember Nancy Ford, who have served on the Land Development Code Advisory Committee, so they'll be able to provide you with some additional insight. The, and then on the, that'll be our, the next workshop we have after that is on November 26th, when we'll have the Arvada, an update on Arvada events in the Arvada Center, and also an update on the Speak Up Arvada Visioning and Strategic Plan effort. Then I would like to call the council's attention to the fact that tonight's meeting is the last council meeting that our communications manager, Maria Vanderkolk, will be at. She is leaving us as of this Friday for an opportunity in the private sector. She was with us now for four years, on their, almost five years, on her return engagement, which we affectionately call Maria Part 2. Maria Part 1 was from 1996, 1996 to 2011. So, and she left us and then came back, and now she's leaving us again. So we wish her well, and we appreciate her service to the community and to our organization.
Thank you for that. And Maria, on behalf of the entire city council, and if anybody else wants to chime in, they certainly can, I've enjoyed working with you all these many years, and you've made me look much better, which is a full-time job in and of itself. So thank you for your diligent work on behalf of the city. You've always helped me to a great extent with my state-of-the-city speeches and helped bring a humorous aspect to those, which is really hard for me to be humorous. So I really appreciate you drawing me out of my shell a little bit. But you've done a great job. You've been a good face for the city when it was needed to have a face for the city from your office, and appreciate all your years of service and dedication to the city. Mr. Marriott?
Well, I want to echo that and say, as hard as it was for her to make you be light and funny, you should have seen her trying to do it with me. But, you know, I had the absolute pleasure to get to give a state-of-the-city speech and could not have done it without Maria's help, and she did just a terrific job helping me out. But not only there, but over the last five years, the time she's called and asked me to do something, it's always incredibly well-prepared, and I think it ranged the gamut from all kinds of things, including a toilet paper ribbon cutting at a bathroom. And Maria did as good a job with that as she did with every other one, and I just want to say thank you so much. It's been an absolute pleasure, and thank you for all you've done for me and for all of us.
Mr. Jones?
Well, I don't know that I can say it much better, other than it's your fault that he's the way he is. It's been awesome working with you for the last several years, and I, you know, echo everything that they've said. When I saw the announcement, I did a little gulp and thought, oh, no. Now what are we going to do? But I'm sure that the opportunities that you have ahead of you are awesome, and thank you for the dedication that you've given to the City of Arvada for all of these many years during Part 1 and Part 2. Good luck.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I just want to say that I enjoyed working with Maria very much on the Arts and Culture Commission, and we're going to miss her singing, too, at Christmas. She's very talented.
Boy, does that mean that Cook is going to sing more?
We have not developed a contingency plan for that yet, but we're working on it.
Let's make sure we do. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you, Maria, for your service. I will remember you particularly for three projects with which I've worked with you. The first was the book called The Hundred Most Influential People in Arvada, and we worked on that project together about, I don't know, 2002, '03. At least it finished up in 2004. So that publication documented a lot of the history of Arvada, and it was a pleasure working with you on that committee. In 2004, we celebrated the centennial of Arvada, and that year, there was a book published on the history of Arvada, heavy with pictures and very good narrative, and you served as the project manager of that project for the city in conjunction with, what was her name, Judy Mativi-Morley, who was the author of that book, and it was a pleasure working with you on that. And the Arvada Historical Society, in conjunction with the city, has just completed a book, and again, you worked as the kind of the project manager, the person who made sure that things worked from the city, all the contractual and the money parts of that, to get that book into publication, and by the way, it will be in publication before the end of November. It should be available. So you will definitely be remembered for those three hard-paper projects completed in a very excellent manner. So I want to thank you for that, and you will be well-remembered for them.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Ms. Vanderkolk, thank you so much for all you have done for the city and for making us look good and make sure that we say and do the right things. You are incredible. You exude professionalism, and you are fantastic, and I am going to miss your laugh the most.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I can't really add much more, but ditto. I think the do's and don'ts have always stayed with us, so you don't know what to say and do in front of folks sometimes. No, I appreciate everything you've done. You've kept us looking good and doing good work and running a good show and good programs there, you know, with KTV and everything else, and we're going to miss you.
Very good. Maria, anything you'd like to say?
Just that when I announced that I was leaving, and my husband, who's on the IEDA board, he said, oh, does that mean I have to cancel our RSVP to the IEDA reception? I said, absolutely not. Our city of Arvada will always be my family, and this is my community, and I'm not going to be a stranger. I'll be, I will be around. You'll be seeing me and Mike. So it's been wonderful. The city's been so good to me, and I will miss you all very much. So thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I just had one thing that I just thought of that was probably important to announce is that this year in the City of Arvada, Arvada West, Pomona, Faith Christian, and Ralston Valley High School football programs all made it to the first round of the state playoffs. A West won their game, and then RV, and Faith Christian also won their game, and then RV and Pomona play this coming weekend. But also, the girls' softball at A West and RV both went to state competition, and soccer, RV and A West boys teams both went to the A West, or to the state championships, and RV golf team went to the state. So we've got a lot of really great athletes in the City of Arvada, and as some of you are aware, we've had a couple of Olympians who have, that are from Arvada that participated in the last Winter Olympics, and I'm sure that we'll have some coming up here in the Summer Olympics. So just a lot of great, active, very athletic kids in Arvada, and that's a great thing.
Maybe not athletic, but the Arvada West marching band went to state. They're the only Arvada school that went to a state.
Got some great kids in our community. It's great to be proud of them, and they're doing some, making us proud, which is very, very good. With that, let's just take a brief recess, and we'll reconvene at 6:30.
I wrote that down, David and I were just talking about.
Before you start, Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make one correction?
Yes, you may.
So, I also wanted to recognize the Pomona gymnastics team who just won state, just this last weekend, so I forgot about that one, and I'm sure I forgot others, but anyway, thank you very much.
Mr. City Attorney, we're just having a discussion up here that maybe we ought to look at when we redo some of our rules or whatever, that we be able to start public hearings a little bit sooner, I mean, it's, we're all over the board, sometimes we're available like at 6:15, sometimes it's 6:45 before we finally get to public hearings, but.
We'll do that for you.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, with that, it is now past 6:30, and I'm going to open the public hearing on the 2019 Annual Action Plan for Housing and Community Development Programs for the City of Arvada, Colorado, Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a public hearing, and it's also related to the companion item next, which is the actual resolution approving the annual action plan, and we do have a presentation scheduled by Mr. Ed Talbot on the CDBG action plan.
So, Mr. Daly, would it be appropriate to also open up the second item? Okay, so also open for public hearing at this time, Councilable 18117, a resolution approving an annual action plan submission for housing and community development programs for the city of Arvada, Mr. Talbot?
That was a very nice article about you for what you do in your free time and how you give back, not just to this community, but to the entire world in terms of looking at issues that are very far-reaching, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that remark, and it's certainly taken me to some strange places, and I could go into some detail on that, but it would take me a while, from the Pacific to the Amazon Basin and to Iceland, but I appreciate that remark, and my intention is to keep up with that work, because I think it's very important, so thank you for that. There's really kind of two items, I would assume we might want to take, see if there's anyone here would like to testify first, and then I'll make a presentation, or I could do the presentation now, whatever the preference would be.
Are there individuals who wish to provide public testimony on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and let you go ahead and make your presentation, and then we'll take action.
So, this is another year, as most of the members, if not all the members of council are aware, we have that opportunity to apply for community development block grant funding, and indeed, we are in that process preparing our annual action plan for 2019 for that funding, and so this is, tonight you had your second public hearing, which we just held, we didn't have anyone speaking, but that is a requirement in the citizen participation plan as part of the effort to obtain citizen input on the use of the funds and our action plan, so what we're going to do is just walk through, it's going to be a two-parter, we're going to walk, my part's going to be to walk you through, once again, the CDBG, some of the basics and the recommendations relative to funding, and then we'll have a speaker that'll come up and speak to the details on the recommendations from the Human Services Advisory Committee relative to those programs that we might phrase as being public services or human services, so just very briefly, just to remind you, take a look at where we've been in terms of our funding amounts, tracked that out since 1975, it's one of the longest-lived federal assistance programs that have come, that has come out of the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level, and one we've been fortunate enough to participate in since that time, in providing a really important resource of federal funding that has a degree of flexibility to it, allows you guys to make some decisions as to where this money goes within certain parameters, so our funding's been up and down.
Mr. Vivers got a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was going to say, next time when we do this graph, because we see it every year, and it's great, and when you look from 1975 to now, you know, what's the value of the dollar in 1979 at $500,000 versus the value of the dollar in 2019, we probably should do a correlation on that in this?
I actually have a graph that did that, I stopped using it about four or five years ago, but I'd be happy to bring that again, because basically I took the factor in terms of what, you know, the decrease in the value of the dollar is because of inflation, what that means to those inflated dollars relative to purchasing power, so if you see that chart with that factor in there, the chart would look different.
Yeah.
Obviously, you'd see a reduction, that line would be going down when you look at purchasing value, I'd be happy to include that at some future date.
I mean, $500,000 in 1979, what is that, '09 or '08, is a lot of money compared to today.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, I thought I'd remember seeing that, I just, I think that would be helpful for us to really understand.
I'd be happy to bring that back, but I very, just so you know, I may say, Ed, you've had more slides on this that you presented to us, I intentionally reduced the number of slides, because I think you've seen it so many times, it gets a little repetitive, but I'd be happy to bring that one back at a, whenever, at a future date, or it could be an item for the council, you know, I just have to update that, put in the factor, so this just takes a look, we're at a, on, say, call it constant dollars, we're at a rate, as you can see, that's been relatively stable for the last several years, we're projecting this time around a grant of $450,000, last year we were projecting 400, we actually got around 497, so I've upped it, I'm still being conservative on this, so we built to a dollar number of $450,000 to try to fit the requests within that, so when we take a look at some of the, again, requirements on the funds, we can't spend no more than 15% of the grant, can be used for newer expanded public services, so we're sort of restrained in how much could go to the types of recommendations that would come out of the Human Services Advisory Committee relative to CDBG, we can't use no more than 20% of the grant for administration or planning activities, we have to stay within that limit, then all proposed activities, except for planning administration, must benefit low and moderate income households, or eliminates loans or blinding conditions, there is a third one, we did have an emergency in the community such as a disaster, tornado, what have you, we also are allowed to use funds to deal with the impact of something like that, but those are the two primary ones, so, again, the estimated amount for 2019 CDBG at 450 grand, when you take all the funding requests, this includes the Human Services Advisory Committee and the internal requests from city staff for ongoing programs we have, we have 24 total requests, around $683,000, again, the recommendations on the CDBG works to the total of 450, so it really breaks out in three primary areas, it's $265,000 for the essential repairs program, $75,000 for human service, for the human services funding pool, and you'll see more detail on that in a minute, then $110,000 in 2019 CDBG for program administration and planning, and that will get you to your 450 grand, and that's the staff recommendation, and that's what's included in the annual action plan.
Mr. Marriott.
So, Mr. Talbot, I just have a quick question, I think you just mentioned in the previous slide that only 20% could be used for administration, and if we're projecting 450, 20% of that would be about 90,000, but you're showing administration of about 110.
Correct.
Is there a way for you to just keep that administration down, or explain that, or?
Well, what we're allowed, it's a little deeper in the weeds, and I think it may be mentioned actually in the packet, is what HUD allows is to take the 20%, but you apply it against your annual allocation, but if you're bringing in program income, you're also allowed to up it by program income, and that's what allows us to get to the higher number, you might recall, we have a revolving loan fund for essential repairs, so if those loans pay back, that's considered program income, so as that funding flows back in, we can apply that percentage to that.
Okay.
But it's a good question.
Could you give me just an idea of what that administration has spent on, is that FTEs or NFT, or what do you spend in the administration?
Primarily would be salaries, it pays a portion of my salary, it pays for a portion salary for one of my administrative assistants, for my front counter person, it also pays for some of the trivial costs that would come out of the finance department from folks up there, and there's a raft of other costs that we have to deal with relative to the administration of the program, one would be environmental review, the projects have to undergo an environmental review process, and there are costs related to that, as an example.
Thank you.
And with that, that is the extent of the requests of the report I have for you, except for one added thing, I want to recognize Councilwoman Ford. Yes, I do, Councilwoman Ford did look in detail at the annual action plan, and she found several areas where there were some grammatical errors and such, that she circled for me, and I will make those corrections, I take fault for some of those, unfortunately, part of them, my excuse and part of it, is I have to use a federal template from a program called IDIS, and I don't have an opportunity to change on that, but to the degree I can, I appreciate your pointing out some of those items for me to correct, so thank you again for that, and that's all I have.
Very good, and then we have a presentation from the Human Services Advisory Board. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is Tom Reynolds.
Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Williams, members of the council, appreciate this opportunity to present our recommendations for funding agencies that meet essential human needs in Arvada, I would also like to take an opportunity to thank Maria for her work with us, I've been on the group for several years, she's been our mentor and our guide through the process, so we've been really grateful, each year the commission receives its grant requests in September, and we have about a month to review them individually, do any checking we want to do, and follow the criteria based on the process for rating them through a point system, those include such things as budget reasonableness, the nature of the need they're serving, benefit particularly that, to Arvada and its citizens, other things like, are they duplicating efforts, it could be, are being done elsewhere, could they collaborate better, in addition, you should know that the agencies that receive these funds provide quarterly reports to the city on their use of these funds, we met as a group on October 9th to compare our individual evaluations and come up with this recommendation list that you have, we had 22 agencies requesting funds this year, that totaled $285,000, a little over, and so we then had the challenge of pairing those down as best we could to come into our budget, so that's where some close scrutiny of the individual applications together that we did really was helpful, this year I'd note that we made a decision to reduce the amount that in the past we have given to some longtime funding recipients, that was a tough decision, we're not entirely comfortable with it, but we felt that was the only way to make this process work, and hopefully some of these agencies won't be affected quite as much as others, this also gave us a chance to bring in some new agencies that are meeting some specific niches in Arvada to serve our citizens, again, not entirely comfortable with that way of going forward, and so I'll make my pitch here, that with a little bit of an additional funding from the city, we could fully fund some of these longtime community partners that we did cut back this year in order to stay within budget, you have before you, and up on the screen there, the funding monies from the Arvada contributions from the city itself, the funding pool of $135,000, I'll pause for just a moment if you wanted to take a look at any of those.
Ms. Ford.
So, Mr. Reynolds, I was a little concerned when I saw the, where is it, seniors resource center, because they're basically staying the same, and yet our population is increasing, you know, in age rapidly, what was the reasoning on that one, if you might?
You hit the nail on the head with our problem, the dollar amount from Arvada itself, not the CDGB dollars, and Mr. Talbot already articulated that the purchasing power of those dollars has been going down for a long time as well, the funding that we have available to us as a commission to allocate has not changed since 2011, so even in those budget years, we're seeing a decline in what we can do, and the costs, the needs of our seniors and other groups are going up, in addition, the purchasing power for those agencies, it costs them more simply to provide the same level of services, so we felt a little bit in a bind, we cut several groups in order to just either stay level or provide some other opportunities for groups to provide some services that hadn't been provided to Arvada residents before, it's a pretty tough funding allocation.
Well, because I noticed too that, you know, from 2016 to the 2019 budget, that there were six more organizations requesting funds, and we're, you know, compared to three years ago, we're also funding three additional, and, you know, I'm just wondering how the committee looks at that, you know, and what do you see, I'd be curious, what do you see, or what did the committee see as changing, you know, in Arvada, where you felt that different organizations or additional organizations were important to fund as well?
Well, I can give you one example, there's a group on here that provides a niche service to single moms who are low-income and just need access to some kind of transportation, and helps them, you know, get repairs to their car, get access to a vehicle, that was a new program, another one that we've funded for the first time that we think is pretty important is a group called CASA, that's the Court Appointed Special Advocates for Children Who Are the Victims of Abuse, and they kind of walk with those children or their families through the court process, yes, we need some more support, we would like to give more to a lot of these groups, a year ago, we made the same request, and that was, could we get a little more funding in the budget, this year we relied on some advice from our staff colleagues here, including Mr. Devon, that we do the best we can with the funds available, and request some supplemental allocations if funds become available, so we can kind of bring that back up again, but we have been pointing out your very issue now for some time.
One more question, I, this came up, excuse me, in conversation with city council, and one of the questions that I've had is, the, and, first of all, I want to thank you for your work, because I know you do good work, and it's a difficult thing, it's a difficult thing to do, but I, I'm kind of curious as to how these organizations are evaluated, are they evaluated based on trends, are they evaluated based on data that you're given in terms of what's happening in Arvada, and, because, you know, it seems to me that there are, you know, we talk about certain groups of people, but the majority of our citizens are aging, and I think that's one of the things that concerns me, that we're not necessarily providing any additional services to people that are aging, and we know that in terms of transportation, that's going to be definitely an issue for our older population as they start giving up their licenses, you know, so tell me, what is the criteria that the Human Services Committee uses, how do you go about evaluating how to give money?
As I mentioned earlier, there are a number of criteria that we've been given over the years that council has approved, what's the nature of the budget, what's the nature of the project, what's the identified human need, does it actually reach a good percentage of Arvada residents, do they have some data around outcomes, those would all be part of the evaluation that we use, we've also been given some guidance from council over the years, so a couple, two, three years ago, we actually were asked to take a harder look at the question of an aging population in Arvada, what would be some of those things, last year, we were, it was suggested, and we did take a real hard look at the Arvada, what was called the Arvada Community Food Bank, now the Community Table, because they were asked to take on some new areas, they got into supporting, working on the housing vouchers, when another organization kind of unraveled a little bit and went out of business, the Inner Arms Agency that provided emergency relief grants, they took that on, so we spent a considerable time on that trend or that issue, the homelessness issue in Arvada was one we looked at a little more extensively this year, should we fund something there, should we not, I'd say there were two or three agencies that they just didn't have a significant application that gave us enough background, so we didn't fund them, it's all of those criteria really together.
And I can't remember if this was before or after you came on council, we had a conversation about senior services several years ago, in fact, I think Councilwoman Pfeiffer was the one who really raised it at that particular meeting on human services, and so we actually came back to council with a workshop and identified the various services that specifically related to seniors, I don't know how many of you remember that, or if you were on council at that time, so, we went through and we looked at things like the tax rebate program, what we do give to seniors, interestingly enough, this year, Volunteers of America did not apply, and Volunteers of America is the Meals on Wheels program, and I don't know why they didn't apply, that actually gave us, because I think in the past we've given them upwards of $30,000 for that Meals on Wheels, which is specific to the senior population, and in terms of evaluation, it should be pointed out that each of the commission members gets a spreadsheet with all of the applications, and they go through, I don't, how many criteria is it, Tom, probably seven or eight at least?
I'd say eight, yeah.
Where they rank, they assign a rank to each of those areas for each agency, that takes them a lot of time to do this, to where they come in for their annual meeting, and they've already got a really solid ranking of, you know, how good was this application, does it, you know, does it meet the criteria that we've asked for, et cetera, so sometimes there's some low-hanging fruit where you could say, they didn't even submit a budget, so we're not going to consider them, but for the most part, the rest of it is pretty tough, and the other conversation that they had this year, which I think is important to point out, is looking at some of the larger organizations like Jefferson Center for Mental Health, trying to think what the other ones were that they looked at that said, these have a robust fundraising arm to this organization, where Community Table is another good example, they have staff that do development, and then there are some other agencies, and I think Hands of the Carpenter was one that they looked at this year, this is the one that does automobile repairs for low-income single moms, to where $5,000 to that organization makes or breaks that organization, whereas $30,000 or $15,000 for Jefferson Center for Mental Health, they might be able to make up for that in their other fundraising opportunities, but it just kind of gives you the context of the complexity of the conversation, and there's a huge amount of need that they're, you know, trying to make their way through.
Well, this is a question that I asked before, and I'm going to ask it again, if I could receive a copy of the evaluation and how, what the criteria is used, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Pfeifer.
So, I'll ask you a magic question, if you had more money, I'm not saying there is, but how much of the applicants are we missing that you would have typically funded, you know, past your criteria, and you would have funded, because you said some obviously didn't even put any effort into the application, or whatever the case may be, but those that did, that would have qualified, I mean, because I see here 295 is what the requests were, and then we had 210, so is it, is it really, you know, whatever the difference is there, 85,000?
I suppose in one sense true, but what we would really like to see is a supplemental allocation of about $40,000, at least this round, for this year, and I would say three groups that we trimmed back intentionally and uncomfortably because we felt we had to, and as Maria pointed out, hopefully they can make up the gap a little bit, but some longtime partners like the Jeffco Action Center, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, and Family Tree, and I'd say Jeffco Action Center and Jefferson Center for Mental Health, they actually serve a fair number of seniors, as well as other folks in serious need, so those are longtime city partners, those are agencies that have an established footprint in this community, and we're not, we're not comfortable in that sense with having to trim them back from past allocations.
Do they know the contribution we've made to the Action Center? We should probably keep that in the conversation moving forward, because we, I think we made them whole, and they ask, but, yeah, I think that that's something we would like to know every year, is maybe what the gap is, and then maybe that will help us with our conversations about funding in the future.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, so you have 20 organizations, thank you so much for all you've done, I really appreciate the work that you do on this committee, it's extremely important, there are 20 organizations on the list, is that the only 20 that applied? Is that the only 20 that applied?
To my knowledge, Maria, those are the ones that came through with the final completed applications.
Which list are you looking at? Council packet, page 299.
There were two documents that were provided to you. At the very end of your packet, there's a colored chart that Councilmember Ford is showing us.
Yep, that's the one I'm looking at.
That is all of the agencies that applied.
Okay.
Whether or not they received money or not. It should also be, so, let's see, I think there's three that applied that were not recommended for any funding. It should also be pointed out that this list is only comprehensive for this particular cycle. It doesn't list all of the agencies who have applied since 2016. For example, you don't see Volunteers of America on here.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah. But over the years, last year, I want to say we had about 28 agencies that applied. This year, we had 22. But some agencies fall off, they apply, they don't apply. Does that answer your question?
It sure does. Yes, absolutely. My next question was going to be, you know, we talked about talking about this at our retreat. Is it possible before then to get a comprehensive list of everybody that has applied in the last, say, three years and what their ask is, so we can see the trend of what the ask amounts are? I assumed from this chart that the ask amount in 2017 was 343,000, but it sounds like it might have been more than that.
That would be very, we have all the data that tracks back to when this program started. It would just be a matter of putting a spreadsheet together that would show all of the agencies that have applied, how much money's been requested, et cetera.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Let me comment here. What this committee does for us is over the top in terms of the time you all put into it, and what, the beauty of it for me is that it takes it out of the political realm that, you know, it's not just city council's favorite charities that are getting looked at here. And we've got, you've all have developed a great matrix for being able to view and analyze each of these, and, you know, by your independent thorough evaluation, much greater than what we as a city council could do. It gives us invaluable information to be able to support what you're asking for. On the issue of the supplemental, we've asked Mr. Archer, our finance director, to look at where we're going to be with one-time funds and whether or not we can possibly dedicate some more to this. I mean, it's always a delicate balancing act of how much more do we need to put into roads or into other infrastructure versus these type of other important needs as well, and remembering that these are tax dollars that we're talking about here in terms of the allocation. So I truly appreciate your frustration and wanting to have more funding, and we're certainly going to look at it in any way we can to be able to do a supplemental allocation to address some of these needs. But I certainly don't want you or any of the other members of the advisory committee to think that this isn't important to us, because it certainly is, and it's certainly something that, even though it may be somewhat limited financial resources, it's something that we take very, very seriously. So I thank you for that.
Thanks.
Anything else you want to add?
No, thanks very much.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Devon, what action do we need to take?
Well, we need to approve a resolution, I believe it's R18-118, in order to authorize the expenditure of city human services funding.
So actually, we should consider that all three of them?
Yes, I'm sorry. All three of them, yeah. You need to look at all three of them.
Yeah. So we're also considering 18-118, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of city of Arvada human services funding pool funds for the 2018, 2019, the agencies providing emergency help, program assistance, and other assistance to Arvada citizens. With that, is there anyone else from the public that would like to provide testimony before we take action on these matters? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council action on the items. Mr. Viver.
If there's not any other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
There are, I see no other questions.
I move that resolution 18-118, a resolution authorizing the expenditures of the city of Arvada human services funding pool funds for 2018 through 2019, to agencies providing emergency help, program assistance, and other assistance for Arvada citizens to be approved.
Motion for approval, this is R18-118.
I want to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Viver.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment on my motion. I want to echo what everyone says, there's just never enough money, and there's, this is great work that you all do and continue doing that, and we at city council will keep looking at ways to help our partners in the community that are helping our community. And this is just a great program, and again, thank you for everything you and your committee does.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment too. One, the job the committee does is amazing to find a good way to distribute these funds. And for the part of the funding of this, it comes from community development block grants, I think it's important that we do that and do a really good job with that. The part of these funds, however, that comes out of our general fund, while I'm okay with, you know, we were kind of broaching the subject of, well, can we give more, and there's need, and maybe we should have more? I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to say, you know, my view of municipal government is limited and focused, and while there's need for these types of services within our community, I'm not so sure that municipal government is the place where these types of things should be funded. These nonprofits have the ability to fundraise, and I think it's important that we participate with our community partners. But I also think it's important that we remain focused on what the core function of municipal government is and not get drifted too far down the line of trying to turn municipal government into doing charity for, on everybody's behalf. I think these organizations do great work and are very important in our community, and I give them huge credit for what they do, and I know how difficult it is to raise money, having done that myself at times. But that, you know, the, I just see a separation here of cities' roles at some point, that there's a limited amount that I think the city can and should be responsible for for that. So thank you.
Okay, with that, that passes seven to zero. Mr. Viver, do you want to go back and do R18-117?
Yep, go ahead. Ms. Ford.
I move that R18-117, a resolution approving an annual action plan submission for housing and community development programs for the city of Arvada to be adopted.
Motion for approval, Mr. Marriott. All votes are cast. Again, Mr. Talbot, thank you to you and your team for the hard work on all of this. That passes seven to zero. Okay, we've, I'll open it up for any additional public comment on tonight's meeting from the public. Seeing none, we've had council reports, we've had city manager report, and I bet you dollars to doughnuts, we do not have a city attorney report.
You're correct, Mayor.
Very good. We stand adjourned.